Good morning. Welcome to the Plaster County Planning Commission meeting for March 8th. Would you please stand and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, will you do the roll call, please? Then you're next, yeah.
Yes, good morning. Let's see, how about Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Seveson is absent. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Rokucci?
Here.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
George?
Thank you, Chairman Nader. George Wasosko, Principal Planner, filling in for E.J., who is not available today. I really don't have much for you with regard to an update, other than the March 22nd hearing is going to be called off, canceled, and the April 12th hearing will be here in Auburn. Other than that, I don't have anything unless you have any questions.
Any questions for George? Okay.
Perfect.
Appreciate it. Okay, we moved to public comment, but before that, I'd like to say that we do have the timer up on the podium, and when the light is green, you have, you can speak, and then as it turns yellow, that gives you a one-minute warning, and when it turns red, your time is up, that's three minutes. And respecting people's time, I'm going to hold everyone to three minutes during the public comment, period now, as well as when we start talking about items, when I open it to the public. I just want to give those of you who want to speak on items that we're going to have on the agenda, time to think about the important things that you may want to discuss with your three minutes before the council or the commission. So we'll start with the first item. Oh, consent agenda, sorry, forgot that last time.
Does anybody want to speak under public?
Oh, sorry, public comment. I didn't, maybe I scared everybody off, so.
With your speech, you did.
I didn't see anybody jump up, so.
Okay.
All right, moving now to consent agenda, which we only have one item on there, which is our notes from our last meeting. What's the pleasure of the commission?
I'll move approval of the consent item, which is the action item or minutes from the February 22nd meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second on that. Sue, do you want to do a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, are we moving too fast? I'm afraid we may be. We're going to have to have a two-minute pause, or at least until that clock says Okay, we're going to hear about Ventura at Granite Bay. Christopher?
Morning, Mr. Chairman and members. Chris Schmidt with the Planning Services Division. Project before you today is Ventura at Granite Bay. It's an application by L&amp;H Homes. The project site is on the south side of Eureka Road, just west of Auburn-Folsom Road in Granite Bay. You can see Linda Creek is south of the project site, Country Court with large lot residential, Purdy Lane, large lot residential, Providence Lane is to the north, also a large lot residential. This is a close-up of the project site. There's an existing home along Eureka Road that would be demolished if the project is approved. There's RV storage area here that would be relocated. This mobile home has already been relocated to this area in the existing mobile home park. These two mobile home units are not part of the project site. This back area is owned, or actually, both parcels are owned by the mobile home park owner. This back area, as you can see, is vacant and not much vegetation besides along the property edges. Land use designation, it's high-density residential in the back portion and rural low-density residential on the parcel along Eureka Road. Around the parcel, also rural low-density residential to the south and to the west. Across the street is low-density residential, and then commercial to the northeast along Auburn-Folsom and Douglas Boulevards. Area zoning, the parcel, the mobile home parcel in the back is residential multifamily, density limit of 10 units per acre with a design corridor combining district. Areas to the south and the west are residential single-family, minimum building size of 40,000 square feet with a PD designation of one unit per acre. And across the street is also residential single-family agricultural combining district, minimum building size of 20,000 square feet. So here's the project site showing the two parcels, the RM zone district where the mobile home park parcel is, and then the parcel along Eureka Road has a residential single-family zoning district. I'll point out that there is not a rezoning request with this project. This is some views of the project site. This is along Eureka Road looking south into the development area that's proposed, the existing house that would be demolished. This is looking across to the east where the RVs are stored that would be relocated. This is looking to the south, and this is also looking to the south showing neighboring properties. This is the buffer area on the west side of the parcel that we'll discuss later. So the project site plan, 33 lots are proposed. The requested entitlements, a binary boundary line adjustment to transfer 4.76 acres of vacant land from the Ridgeview Mobile Home Park site to the project site, a vesting tentative subdivision map for the subdivision of 6.11 acres in the 33 single-family lots. There are two variances, a variance to the front and side minimum setbacks normally required in the RS district on Lot 1, and a variance to side yard minimum setbacks for two-story residences on lots 2 through 33. So the RS zone portion of the project site will be one lot, a total of 1.29 acres. In the rear portion, the RM zoning will be 32 lots on 4.76 acres or 6.7 units an acre, which is less than the 10 units allowed in our zoning ordinance. The minor boundary line adjustment, I apologize, somehow got shifted, but this shows the two parcels that exist today, 12 acres for the mobile home park, 1.29 acres the parcel along Eureka Road. That will change to two new parcels. The mobile home parcel will be 7.379 acres, and the new project site is 6.11 acres with the minor boundary line adjustment. This area here will be a landscape buffer area. It will be owned by the mobile home park but maintained through a landscape maintenance agreement with the property owners association of Ventura at Granite Bay. So there'll be one single-family home on the larger portion of Lot 1 along Eureka Road, single level, 2,600 square feet of living space. There'll be a secondary dwelling unit on the eastern portion of Lot 1 with 840 square feet of living space, and then the remainder 32 lots range the size from 4,759 square feet to 6,562 square feet, all between 50 and 57 and a half feet wide, with homes anticipated to be about 1,750 to 2,330 square feet of living space. This gives you a view of just a typical streetscape that's proposed, a mix of one- and two-story homes. Walk you through the variances on Lot 1. On the western portion of Lot 1, a reduced side setback of 10 feet is proposed where 20 feet is normally required. This backs, this here backs up to new lots in the southern portion of the site. A reduced front setback along the project entryway on the eastern portion of Lot 1, 68.5 feet or 75 feet from centerline of traveled way is normally required. And then on the eastern portion, where the secondary dwelling unit is proposed, a 10-foot side setback is requested where 20 feet is normally required. And then the applicant has agreed to do 20-foot side setback here where 20-foot is normally required, so a little bit more to give a little distance between existing residents to the west. So the variances on lots 2 through 33, the required side setbacks in the RM DL 10 district are five feet for a single story and 7.5 feet for a two-story. Rear setbacks are 10 feet and maximum coverage for structures in a lot of 70%. So the applicant is asking for on lots where two-story residences are constructed, the front, the side setback on the first floor would be five feet where 7.5 feet is required. Let me restate that. If it's a two-story home, they're asking for a side setback of five feet for the first floor and 7.5 feet for the second floor, where 7.5 feet would be normally required. And that shows you what it looks like. And this shows you in real life what that step setback looks like. So it'd be five feet here, minimum 7.5 feet for the two-story portion. So there's a lot of discussion with neighbors about compatibility to existing residences. This is high-density residential, it's been zoned this way since at least 1971, large lots all around it. These homes are a minimum about 100 feet from the property line, so they're setback at distance, but there's a lot of concern about two-story residences backing up to the larger lots around them. So the applicant did propose the minimum 20-foot buffer on the southern and western property lines, and then agreed to do one-story residences on the blue circle dots. There's an existing home here that's fairly close to the property line. This is just to be consistent with the singles, mostly single-story residences along Eureka Road. This was a high-visibility parcel. When you enter the project, the thinking was not to have two stories here, to have a kind of a tunnel effect here, and this would be a smaller setback than this lot, so this one would be quite visible from the street. And then neighbor concerns over here do one story on lots 14 and 15 to give a little bit more buffer and privacy to this property owner over here. On Lot 25, for aesthetic reasons, the applicant has agreed to do a 20-foot rear second-story setback if a two-story home is built here, just to give it a little bit more character instead of a large blank two-story wall at the project entrance. Walk you through the fencing plan. There'll be enhanced wood fence at the project entrance. These are highly visible, and also at the EVA that's proposed to connect to the mobile home park down here. So this will be a fence with a little bit of landscape up front, so a little bit better quality fence than you typically see on a private lot. These are the solid wood fences, the privacy fences, and I'll note that there's a solid wood fence proposed at the back of the new lots adjacent to the buffer area here. That's that landscape area I talked about. And then the existing fences that neighbors have put in place will remain untouched, so if it's solid or open, they'll stay that way. This is a look at the masonry entry feature, just some signage and a little bit more decorative at the project entrance. Originally proposed was a sound wall along Eureka because of the sound of traffic on Eureka. At the MAC, they requested or wanted alternatives, and the alternative's looked at, but the sound consultant was a landscape with, or burming with landscaping, or solid wood fence, and the applicant has chosen solid wood fence instead of the masonry for a more country look. Tree impacts, 191 trees on site. Unfortunately, most of them will be impacted in the center of the project. 47 protected trees will be removed and mitigated for. There are 54 trees in this buffer area, but just five of them are impacted by the grading required for the lot preparation. Shows the street trees planted throughout the project. Sidewalks, there'll be a four-foot sidewalk internal to the project site. The applicant has agreed to extend the sidewalk across the mobile home park entrance to connect to existing sidewalk at the fire station. There'll also be a six-foot DG path that's required in the community plan along the project entrance along Lot 1. Parking, two on-street parking spaces are required for lots along 20-foot road segments, so there will be 29 on-street parking spaces provided. So a total of 97 spaces with driveways and on-street, 165 spaces including garage parking. Traffic study determined 324 project trips daily, 26 in the AM peak hour, 34 in the PM peak hour, and I'll point out that Eureka Road currently has 4,500 vehicles trips daily traffic, so this is about a 7% increase on Eureka Road. We did look at cumulative impacts, the additional traffic from the project does not result in any nearby roadway segment operating below level of service that's allowed in the county standards. Auburn-Folsom-Eureka Road intersection to the east, it'll operate at level of service C in the AM peak hour and D in the PM peak hour, and that satisfies the minimum level of service E standard of the community plan. Existing plus project, this project is only putting seven additional cars in the AM peak hour heading west on Eureka Road, however, that was enough to trigger the need for some improvements at Barton and Eureka Road, so the applicant is going to be required to put in a turn lane, westbound turn lane on Eureka, and that will reduce the level, the delay there by 7.4 seconds. The traffic consultant looked at the project excess, if there was adequate site distance for the entryway, and determined there was adequate distance, 550 feet or more in both directions. Looked at whether the left turn lane into the project should be constructed and determined was not needed. There will be approach and departure tapers planned. And the intersection offset does not meet 100-foot county guidelines with the road across street Providence Lane, but the entrance location was chosen to maximize site distance, and it's at this peak area, the high point here in the road. So this went to the Granite Bay MAC as an action item on February 7th. Issues raised by a number of residents was the adequacy of the buffer area, who's going to maintain it, some questions about the drainage impacts. There's an existing drainage along the west side of the project site, and whether this project was going to make it worse or divert any of that water. Questions about what drainage improvements were planned, and of course, traffic from the project. The MAC did recommend that the planning commission approve the project, but asked that the landscaping in that buffer area be maintained in perpetuity, and also asked for additional landscaping in that buffer area to provide more landscaping or more buffer to neighboring residents. The applicant has determined, and staff supports them, that the natural landscaping that will be remaining in that buffer area is adequate buffer, and no new landscaping should be So with that, staff's recommendation is you adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program for the Ventura-Granite Bay project, approve the minor boundary line adjustment to transfer approximately 4.76 acres of vacant land from the Ridgeview Mobile Home Park site to the project site, approve the vesting tentative subdivision map for the subdivision of 6.11 acres in the 33 single-family lots, approve the variance of front and side yard minimum setbacks normally required in the RS district on Lot 1, and approve the variance to side yard minimum setbacks for two-story residences on lots 2 through 33, subject to the findings contained in the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Christopher, for your very thorough report. I'll open it for questions. Rich?
I just had a question that I think deals with the fencing, but, you know, several of the parcels, their backyard is adjacent to the buffer area, and so how, I guess, how are we going to maintain over time the delineation between the backyard and the buffer area?
There'll be solid wood fencing, and there's a condition that says that the solid wood fencing has to remain in place. So the applicant will put it in, and then individual homeowners will need to keep it there. This existing fencing along the southern and western boundaries that these residents have put in, it'll remain untouched.
So there'll be fencing on both sides of the buffer area, then? Okay.
Yeah, and the neighbors wanted the solid fencing here to provide them privacy.
Okay. I missed it, I guess, when you were showing the fencing map that... Okay, thank you.
Chris, the right turn lane going off of Eureka onto Barton, I forget what the number was, but seconds per car stop or whatever, we're talking like seven seconds a car or something like, it's...
So it increased the delay by 3.6 seconds, and county standards only allow 2.4-second increase, so that was enough to trigger that improvement, to get it under, the delay under that 2.4 seconds, and it was the right turn lane.
It'll take years to equal out the delay that's going to be caused in constructing that lane in saving the time to put it in. It just seems like an awful lot for very little.
And there's also long-range plans to do either signal or a roundabout at the intersection, so it's really an improvement that's a throwaway, unfortunately.
Yeah, very unfortunately. A roundabout would be good in that area, but then that would just be torn up and tossed.
Correct.
Is there any way we can not require that?
I'm like, work, sir.
No, sir. Okay.
I think you're on now.
There we go. So the question was, can we not require it? It was mitigation recommended in the traffic study and included in the initial study, so I would say no, it's required, unless they want to build a roundabout, which I'm sure they don't.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking that very common sense question. Any other questions for Christopher or comments?
Just a quick question. Chris, can you speak to the drainage problem or draining situation as the piping and where it drains now and where it's going to go and how it's not going to increase, if you're available, or maybe we can get the applicant to talk to it?
I think that the drainage consultant is here can speak to this, but generally, the water in this project site will exit where it does today to the south here, then it heads east, and then out this way across private property, across Country Court down to Linda Creek. Neighbors have raised questions about this drainage along the western boundary. This water doesn't come from this project site, it mostly comes from the backyards over here. This water continues south, does not merge with this water at all. The gradient proposed even in this back corner doesn't impact what's going along here. There's a natural elevation here, so this part is a little bit higher than the neighbors' so this water will continue coming this way. So we've got common letters about, is this an intermittent stream? We've looked at it, flood control's looked at it, and the project applicants, consultants have looked at it, and said it's not a stream, it's just a drainage, so there's no required setback along there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Christopher, if you could kind of stand by, because I'm guessing that when the applicant is speaking or any of the consultants, we may need to get pictures moved up on the screen. So now, would the applicant like to make some comments?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. It's not often that I get to appear in front of a planning commission in the morning, it's usually the end of the day, so this is a distinct pleasure. It's my privilege to represent L&amp;H Construction. The applicant for the project, Jim Luce and Ron Higgins, the L&amp;H of L&amp;H Construction are both here. We also have Ken Baker from Baker Williams Engineering here, our civil engineer, Patrick Steyer from Watermark, our hydrologist, and Ken Anderson from KD Anderson, our traffic engineers. So should you have questions, we came armed with those people to try to answer your questions.
Could you give us your name?
I'm sorry, that might have been a nice thing to do. My name is Gregory Thatch, and as I said, I represent L&amp;H Construction.
Thank you.
L&amp;H is an infill developer. It's been my privilege to represent them for probably well over 20 years now. I've got to see the work that they do. They do such quality work, and difficult work, as we all know with infill development. It's some of the most difficult because you are surrounded by existing neighbors. They build semi-custom homes. If you ever go to one of their subdivisions, you're going to see multiple elevations and multiple floor plans. Their market is really fundamentally people who are looking to downsize, and I think that's particularly apropos here. These are people who probably live in Granite Bay today, like a lot of us getting a little older, don't want all of the land anymore, now the kids are gone, and they want to downsize, but they want to stay and continue to live in the community that they know well, where their friends are and where their church is, and all of the amenities that they're used to. I should also say at the outset that it's been a pleasure working with staff on this project. We are in accord with all of the conditions that are before you today. When Ron Higgins first came to see me, well over two years ago now, about this piece of property, we were looking at what should be planned for this property. We had some fundamental principles in mind. One is, don't ask for a general plan amendment, don't ask for a community plan amendment, don't ask for a zoning change. Do what is in the plan today, and that is what is before you today. We are not looking to change any of those things. This is a project that meets the zoning requirements for the property. I might say that the density is also significantly lower than what it could be. This is zoned for up to 10 units an acre, we're a little more than half of that. These could be much bigger buildings, it could be different. We've tried to design something here that is going to be a nice transition from that mobile home park to the larger lots that are going to be out there. There are issues that we've heard at the MAC and otherwise, one of them you talked about already, and that has to do with drainage. I want to emphasize what Chris just emphasized a moment ago, that the lots along Purdy Way are in a different subshed. The water does not drain there now, it will not drain there when this project is built. This project takes care of its own drainage. It has a, it will pipe that drainage into large pipes. Some of these pipes are as big as 56 inches. These are very large pipes. However, when it exits the property, that pipe will be 18 inches. It has the effect of detaining that water in the pipes underground so that it could leave the property at exactly the same location it leaves it today at a rate that is no greater than it is today. We've also heard about neighbors' privacy. Some of you have probably got to see the property, you certainly have seen the photographs. That is a 22 to 23-foot wide strip that will go all the way around the western and southern portion of the property. It will be as it is today. It is very thick, it is very tall, and it provides a significant amount of privacy. Very, very little change will happen in there. There are only five trees that will be removed, they must be removed in order to grade the property. We believe that the screening is more than adequate for these neighbors. That strip of land will be maintained in perpetuity by the association for this property, and there is a condition within your conditions before you today that requires the perpetual maintenance of that property. That will, by the way, be done by an easement with the mobile homeowner. It will be a perpetual and an exclusive easement with obligations for maintenance. The variances that are there, let me say at the outset that these variances are designed to make the project better. Should they not be granted, it will not stop the project, the project will still go forward, we simply think it would be better with these variances. There are two. The one variance deals with that large lot that is split by the entryway along Eureka, and on that one, we have asked for some changes in setbacks, some trade-offs, making some smaller, some bigger. The effect, however, is to take the coverage on the property from 14% that it would be with the existing required setbacks to 16%. It's not a big change in the lot coverage, but it does allow the buildings to be configured a little differently. For instance, you will not have to have a garage facing outward, it can be on the side. In some places... and some places you'd only have 16 feet to build on. And so, this allows a slightly larger area to build. With respect to the two-story homes, what is being sought is something that is pretty typical throughout the state, and that is having the second story set back. Your current proposal, or your current rules would cause a straight vertical line here. We believe that it would be much nicer to be able to have a line that went up on the first story with five feet, then seven and a half feet. I think you saw the diagram that Chris put up there. It makes, architecturally, for a much, much nicer building. And with that, Mr. Chair, I would close, ask that you approve this project today, and I would like to reserve some time maybe to come up after public comment and for rebuttal, and I'm open to any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Thatch?
You mentioned on lot, on the large lot, it's a 2% increase. Does, do you have a figure on the other lots that five yards, that five foot setback, or you know, moving back?
Oh, what it would do in terms of the additional coverage?
Yes.
I don't have that figure, Commissioner, but just thinking about it, it has to be pretty minimal.
Okay. Maybe one of your consultants does.
Yeah.
I should have figured it out myself, but thought I'd ask you the question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions for Mr. Thatch?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now open it for public comment, and as I mentioned earlier, I'm limiting that to three minutes, and we do have the timer again up, and that, again, will, as long as it's green, you're good to go. When it hits yellow, you should start to focus on wrapping up, because they'll give you a minute. And I would like to say that I know that we received a number of letters and emails from people in the community, and the commission has had an opportunity to review those, so it's not necessary to read those back to us. But if you would like to highlight some of the comments that you did present to us, we'd certainly be open to that. So, I will now, anyone who would like to get up and make a comment about this project, I'll open that up. Did I scare everybody? Okay. Come forward, and please give us your name.
Hi, my name is Mike Fisher, I'm a resident at 9087 Purdy Lane. It is this lot in the lower-left corner, yes, that lot there, thank you.
Okay.
And I appreciate the opportunity to comment. First of all, I want to thank Chris Schmidt, he's been very responsive to questions I've had, and I actually have had some correspondence with Mr. Higgins, the developer himself as well. The reason I'm here today is I want to clarify one of the recommendations from the Granite Bay MAC last month, and that was about a little bit more privacy enhancement specifically between Lot 14 of the proposed development and my lot there, because despite the fact that there is some greenery that provides some privacy, I'm going to leave the mic here and point out. Right here, this area right here, this is my backyard, this is my pool where my family and my two young daughters play and have sometimes soccer gatherings out there. This green area here is actually very low, blackberry thick, and this Lot 14 has a front door that, and living room windows that will have a direct line of sight into our yard. My sole request today is that, consistent with what the MAC recommended, the landscaping, and the landscaping buffer was a topic of some debate at the MAC meeting, and so what I'm hoping for is a row of shrubbery to be installed. The MAC just last night clarified, when they approved the minutes, that landscaping meant a new installation, not maintenance of what is already there. And so, whether it's on the property, Lot 14's property, or whether it's on this side of that fence in the landscaping buffer is indifferent to me. I'm just looking for additional privacy now that there's going to be a front door and some living room windows facing with a direct line of sight into my yard. This is not a new request, it was requested by the MAC as a condition of approval just last month at the February 7th meeting, and there was some discussion about whether the landscaping should be on in the landscaping buffer, or whether it should be on the side of the fence. And all I'm asking for, whether it is part of the planning commission approval or conditions of approval, or whether it was voluntarily done by the developer, is just a small row of bushes that will quickly grow, very much like the developments you guys have in Orangeville and Citrus Heights, very much like other developments in the area where you see pretty rapid growth, low water, drought-resistant plants put in, and just to enhance privacy. As I hope the public and the planning commission can understand is, my school-age girl's 12 and eight, playing in the pool, we don't know who's going to occupy that lot, it's just a small ask, I believe, to make for a little bit of enhanced privacy, whether it's not an adequate buffer right now, or not an adequate green buffer, and so I hope that's a small request. This project, if you do the math, these homes are probably going to go for about, you know, 500,000 gross, I don't know what the profit is per house, but we're talking about some extra greenery to continue that buffer where I don't have someone walking at the front door and looking at my daughters playing in the pool. So, I hope that's a small ask, it's probably in the high hundreds, maybe low thousands of dollars for a project that's going to be in the tens of millions as far as gross. I hope that's a reasonable request that you can include.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And I do have it in writing, if that matters.
Didn't give it to the...
Hi, my name is Cheryl Burkema. I'm a Granite Bay resident for over 20 years, I live off of Eureka, down from the project. I spoke with a local professional ecologist, living in Granite Bay with more than two decades of experience with SEQA and the characterization and mitigation of impacts associated with land development. He submitted comments on this project in writing by email that I do not see in the staff report today for the mitigated negative declaration. I want to share some of the key points from his submittal for your consideration today. The county's current tree mitigation program is significantly outdated and fails to mitigate for impacts to oak trees and other native trees as required by SEQA, other California law, and the county's own policies and goals. As I'll describe in a moment, the current fee-based structure makes it impossible to implement a successful program to actually mitigate native tree impacts. As such, the current program exposes the county and its citizens to costly legal fees associated with indefensible certification of SEQA documents, and contributes to the deforestation of the county without adequate mitigation. This issue also exposes developers to delay in added costs. The current mitigation structure requires developers to pay a fee equal to $100 per inch of tree trunk DBH, which is a measure of quantifying the size of a tree. For the Ventura Granite Bay project, this results in a fee of $67,000. Assuming that the county is going to implement the mitigation for impacts to 47 native trees on behalf of the applicant through the use of in-loo fee, the county either needs to acquire and permanently preserve a property with at least 47 native trees, and full mitigation would actually require the permanent protection of higher number of trees, only preserving 47 would allow for a net loss of 47 trees to the county. Or plant or have planted and maintained through maturity, being defined as achieving a six-inch DBH to the county's ordinance for replacement trees. In practice, the planting number would also need to be considerably higher due to die-off for establishment. Most counties in California use a minimum of four-to-one replacement ratio, mitigation of trees planted to trees impacted, and some counties require as high as 10-to-1 replacement. Santa Barbara would be an example of that. On the Ventura Granite Bay property, like most Granite Bay Lumis area, the majority would be oak trees. To purchase these trees and prepare a site for restoration with weed abatement, plant and maintain required oak trees for a minimum of five years would be a typical maintenance period for native restoration, would require considerably more than 67,000. Consequently, the county is currently approving projects, oh, this actually assumes that the county has an acre of free land to use. Consequently, the county is currently approving projects with potentially significant biological resource impacts as defined by SEQA that are not being mitigated to a less than significant level. In addition to the legal exposure under SEQA challenge, it's troubling that the county leadership is failing the citizens of the county and all the future generations by allowing environmental impacts without suitable mitigation. The solution to this is straightforward and could be implemented immediately with broad community support. The county should require a minimum mitigated requirement of four-to-one active planning of replace an impacted native trees. On this project and all future projects, no tree impact should be allowed until a formal habitat restoration plan prepared by a qualified restoration ecologist or certified arborist have been reviewed and approved by the county, and the entire project has been properly bonded. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm a little concerned that this was not included in the comments, because the public is not allowed to read this as part of the review. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have that been previously submitted, your comments?
That's correct, this was submitted by email by an ecologist.
Oh, okay, it was already previously submitted, okay, I just want to make sure that we... Did you get a copy, Sue? Or you'd have to go through and see it? Okay, that's fine.
Sandy?
Good morning, Sandy Harris, I live in Granite Bay. I'm not understanding why just three homes on that western border are restricted to one story, when you've got three lots backing up to that middle project or parcel there that is probably an acre. I don't know why they can't all be one story on the borders and to the south also, which is one acre zoning. I'm not understanding why we have to have a wall along Eureka Road, it's a very country road, and it's just going to bounce the noise north to that house in this 2.3 acre zoning. Also, the trail comes out and goes east, it's, to me, an overkill, because it has a trail plus a sidewalk, and I don't know the purpose of that, it should be one or the other. We keep talking about affordable housing, but when we keep adding all these things onto the developers, it just seems to me like it increased their cost, and that seems like an overkill. Also, that turn lane, I have a problem why this developer has to pay for it, because just to the east of that, there were 28 homes approved on the corner of Auburn, Folsom, and Eureka, and they didn't contribute anything to this. And I agree with Jeffrey, to save seven and a half seconds is ridiculous.
Well, Sandy, wait a minute, let me catch my breath here.
You agree with Sandy?
You heard her, she just agreed with me, I had to stop and...
You're taking up my time. But it's just to me, that basically is a pass-through road for traffic going, they don't want to get down on Douglas. So, if you're going to save them seven seconds, it's ridiculous. And then I'd just like to call your attention to the fact that our busiest fire station is just on the east of this project, and I have their fire calls for December, they had 98 calls, not all of them from that station, but that is our busiest one. 10 of those calls were to the senior care homes that are located on Barton and the corner of Barton and Douglas, and that was just in one month. And when they go to those calls, they take our brand-new truck 17, which is a monster of a truck, and their ambulance, and if you recall, our station on Douglas Boulevard had to be closed, because they were having trouble getting out with all the traffic on that road. So, anyway, those are just some of the comments I have about this. As far as the variances, I understand why they're asking for them, to set them, give them more architectural appearance, but you know, if they were smaller houses, they could do the same thing without the variances. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Anyone else? Okay, then I'm going to close the public portion of this and ask the applicant if they'd like to come back and respond to some of the comments that were made.
Well, Mr. Thacher, I did calculate out on a standard, on a 6,000-square-foot lot, it looked like to be about a 5% increase in coverage, plus...
Yeah, it's right around that, we did the same math, and I think, I think we're in the same ballpark there. So, I can, I can take that one off my list. First of all, with respect to Mr. Fisher's request, you will note that Lot 14 and Lot 15 are single-story homes, probably no real need on Lot 15, that was an accommodation to Mr. Fisher, that is a rear yard setback, the others are side yard setbacks, and so it was a little different. Keep in mind that this property is a little bit higher, keep in mind that you have a six-foot fence, a single-family home, the sightline isn't there, the foliage is significant, and Mr. Fisher has in fact planted redwoods on his property, which is totally appropriate, within that gap area that he's talking about. We see no need for additional landscaping in that area. With respect to the concerns on the tree ordinance, I'll leave that to the county, that's not really about this project. With respect to the fire department and the concern that was raised, we have met with the fire department, the fire department and the chief had no problem with this project and the traffic issues that were there, and so we think we are, we are fine in that regard. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Could you address the one-story issue that Mr. Harris brought up?
Sure, sure. The other lots along that side, again, similar to what I discussed with respect to Lot 15, all of those lots face the street, and those are rear yards, they have a much bigger setback than the side yard, and given the foliage that is there, the height of the trees, you simply can't see anything. So, the privacy is there today and will remain so.
Any questions for Mr. Thatch at this point, or any of the consultants?
Thank you.
Close the public comment.
Can I, he's commenting, his comment, though?
It's, I've closed the public comment at this point, so...
If he rebuts, I should be able to...
All right, I'm going to give you one minute to rebut, and that's it.
He's absolutely right, I did plant some redwoods to try to mitigate whatever might happen. I don't know how this decision will go, but there is a clean line of sight right now that those redwoods don't block, and the expense, I don't feel, should fall on me, because I'm going to have to water all those things. I'm asking for a row of bushes that will block what the redwoods aren't blocking. There is a clean line of sight, and one of the facts that came out in the recent details I've exchanged with Chris Schmidt is that the house will be elevated, and again, I didn't know until just about a month ago, there's going to be a front door with that clean line of sight in there. So, I hope it's a reasonable request, just putting some plants on their side, because I'm trying to do what I can, but it's not going to fill in, it's still going to be a clean line of sight right there, and I'm just making the humble request that they do something on their side, too.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me in.
Okay, now I'm going to close it for public comments or presentations and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
I just have a question, or you have a question?
Well, I had a couple of comments I was going to make, but go right ahead.
What question for the, maybe the hydrologists in the audience there with the applicant? The onsite, the size of the pipes and the small pipe leaving, so basically you're going to have onsite retention basin underground with a 56-inch pipe and that volume, for what kind of a storm surge is that? Is that the 100-year, 200-year, 50-year, any estimation of that?
Yes, this is Patrick Steyer, Watermark Engineering, and to answer your question, it is the 100-year flow. And I looked at the analysis for the 10-year flow as well as the 100-year flow, and both of them are at or equal to existing conditions. And to change a little bit, the outflow is going to be a weir as opposed to an 18-inch pipe. It'll actually fill up the area and then slowly drain out with an emergency overflow that is typical of drainage design.
Okay, 100-year, that's the one, the answer I wanted. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions before Jeffrey's comment, or Granite Bay representative?
Just commenting on the variance for the second floor, I really like that idea. When you have homes close together, you know, builders tend not to put gingerbread on the sides of homes. So, what you get is a slab side and a slab side, and it's kind of unattractive, and having a little variation to take advantage of some architectural ability, I think, is a really good idea and will benefit the project. And I support that idea, and I think it would be good. That's just kind of my comment on that variance. I already made my rant about the turn lanes, so...
Is that it?
I think so.
Okay. Any other comments? Christopher, could you put the recommendation? Thank you, sir. So, it's the pleasure of the commission.
Do we need to do these in separate, one at a time, or can we...
Yes, they should be taken separately.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program for the Ventura at Granite Bay project.
Second? Oh, we got two seconds. Take your pick. I'll say Mr. Rokucci.
Okay, I have a first by Commissioner Moss and a second by Commissioner Rokucci. If I could have a vote by Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would further move to be approved... I would further move that we approve
Before the, before, I'm sorry to interrupt Commissioner Moss, but before the next motion, could you please add subject to the findings?
Subject to the findings and the staff report.
And the attached conditions.
And the attached conditions.
Yes, thank you.
Always. Anybody want to change their vote after that? I would make a motion that we approve the minor boundary line adjustment to transfer approximately 4.76 acres of vacant land from parcel 050160077000, the Ridgeview Mobile Home Park, to the project site, subject to the findings and the staff report, I guess.
Conditions.
Okay, it's been moved.
And attached conditions.
And attached conditions.
It's been moved and seconded.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Okay. Okay, I have a first by Commissioner Moss and a second by Commissioner Johnson. If I could have a vote from Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Would further move that we approve the vesting tentative subdivision map for the subdivision of 6.11 acres into 33 single-family lots, subject to the findings found in the staff report and the conditions of approval.
Second, oh, okay, now, while Mr. Rokucci's turning.
Okay, I have a first by Commissioner Moss and a second by Commissioner Rokucci. So, Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would move that we approve the variance to front and side yard minimum setbacks normally required in the RS district on Lot 1.
She's looking at you. Is there more to that?
Subject to the findings found in the staff report and the conditions of approval.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded.
I have a first by Commissioner Moss and a second by Commissioner Rokucci. And a vote from Mr. Moss, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci? Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we approve the variance to side yard minimum setbacks for two-story residents on lots 2 through 33, subject to the findings found in the staff report and the conditions of approval.
Second?
Okay, another, all right. Give him a second.
We're taking
It's been moved and seconded. All right.
I have a first by Commissioner Moss and a second by Commissioner Rokucci. So a vote from Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did we finish?
Appeal rights.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, that's right. Thank you, gentlemen. This can be appealed. You have 10 days to do it in and $581 to appeal it to the board of supervisors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Thank you, everybody who attended for this. Now, we'll move to our 1020 item. Angela, I guess, is going to make a presentation on the sustainability plan update. Do, do we need to take five minutes, gentlemen? Do you mind, Angela? We're going to just take a real quick break because since we have a very small group today, we need to have everybody in the room.
That works. Thank you.
Pardon? Angel, right? Didn't I say Angel? Sorry. Sorry.
With an overall objective to identify emission reduction strategies while also maximizing, looking for saving potentials for both cost and operational activities within the county. We did have some additional funding that was provided at that time that allowed us to complete the first greenhouse gas emission inventory. That report was completed back in 2011. We did have additional funding that was provided later with the 2016, 2017 Planning Services Division budget, which set aside money to allow staff to be able to complete the process. And so in June of 2017, the Board of Supervisors executed a contract with Placeworks to allow us to complete this effort. With some additional assistance that was received, C.R. Business Council has also assisted us with updating our greenhouse gas emission inventories, which were just completed. So here we have the work program that outlines the number of tasks that staff will begin to engage. We do have some items here, if you can see, in blue. These items have been completed or are in progress. We have an outreach engagement strategy. We have a technical advisory committee that's been formed, and then our greenhouse gas emission inventory, which was completed in January. And in this presentation, I'll be going over the next steps that are necessary to complete the plan. So what is a sustainability plan? Sometimes you may hear these plans referred to as either climate action plans or greenhouse gas reduction strategies. And essentially, these plans are comprehensive roadmaps. They outline a number of programs and policies that will be undertaken by both the community and the county as a whole. And again, our goal is to be able to identify the most cost-effective emission reductions while being able to also maximize economic benefits. And we do have some goals that are outlined as part of this effort. The first is to conform to California laws and regulations. The second, to be able to implement the county's general plan, and also to provide a sequituring and streamlining process for new development projects. For our regulatory framework, California has adopted a variety of regulations that are aimed at reducing greenhouse gas emissions throughout the state. And they've also identified targets that must be met for years 2020, 2030, and 2050. In addition to those emission reduction targets, we also have a number of Senate bills that are aimed at identifying areas that have been impacted by climate risk. And we are required, within our general plan, to include this analysis within our efforts. It is the intent to prepare this plan which meets the streamlining provisions that are outlined in the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, which will allow us to streamline the process for development projects. This would allow, the sustainability plan would allow for consistency and predictability in the way that we analyze our project-level greenhouse gas emissions from land use projects. It allows also for mitigation measures to be analyzed and imposed on projects consistently. There are four main components to the sustainability plan. First, we have the emission inventory, which identifies sources of emissions and the relative amount of emissions that come from each sector. We have our reduction strategies component, which will identify feasible mitigation measures necessary to achieve the selected emission reduction target. We have our feasibility and implementation component, which will ensure that reduction strategies and targets are appropriate and attainable for the county. Last, we have our vulnerability and adaptation component, which will identify the areas in the county that are most vulnerable to climate risk and provide resources to help residents adapt. So again, our greenhouse gas emission inventory was completed in January of this year, and this was our first key task. We have the Placer County operations and community-wide inventories for the year 2005 and 2015 that are now complete. There are two separate components to the inventory. The first is the community-wide inventory. This analyzes emissions that are occurring in the unincorporated part of the county, and we're looking at emissions that are resulting from residences, businesses, and visitors. The second component is the county government operations, and this analyzes emissions resulting from the county's operations and its own facilities. So some of the biggest takeaways in this inventory report, we have found that the largest source of emissions comes from the community transportation sector. The second-largest is our residential energy use, and third, followed by agriculture. For our community-wide inventory in 2015, we had more than 1.1 million metric tons of carbon dioxide, or CO2, which was emitted. This is an 18% decrease in emissions from our 2005 inventory, and this is primarily the result of reductions in energy use, reductions in water use, and also reductions in agricultural We also have, for our community operation sector, for 2015, the county's government operations generated approximately 49,000 metric tons of CO2. We found that the solid waste sector is the most significant contributor of emissions within the county's operations. The inventory did show a slight increase in emissions resulting from the western regional landfill compared to the 2005 inventory. However, this increase is partially offset by cleaner sources of electricity and also reductions in propane and gasoline consumption by the county's buildings and vehicle fleet. So what I'll do now is I'll pass it over to Lauren, who is going to share with you the next steps in the process to complete the sustainability plan.
Thank you. So the next step in the work program is to complete a forecast of future GHG, or greenhouse gas, emissions for both the community and county-wide operations. This forecast will allow staff to determine appropriate emission reduction goals for 2020, 2030, and 2050, in accordance with the recommended statewide GHD targets. The county already has many programs that are helping to reduce emissions, and we will want to be sure to get credit for any emissions reductions occurring from these programs, which could help us reach our identified targets. As Angel mentioned, the sustainability plan will include a vulnerability assessment and adaptation portion. The goal of these strategies is to assist our local community members and support long-term resiliency. Here we have just a few examples of potential adaptation measures. I'll go through them quickly. For example, our tree mortality issue that's hit Placer so hard. An example strategy would be to implement a tree removal program. For those extremely hot days that we have coming up, an AC unit replacement program could be implemented. And to reduce the risk of flooding, we could look at increasing permeable pavement. These are just some potential reduction strategies, which could be implemented to help achieve our identified target. So to target energy use, we could look at renewable energy incentives. To target that huge community transportation sector, we could look at expanding our public transit. And to reduce solid waste emissions, a possibility would be to expand our compost and recycling efforts. And finally, a cost-benefit analysis and implementation program will be developed to ensure that every measure is feasible and can be implementable in Placer County. We'll let Angel finish up with the outreach portion.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay, so before concluding, I'd like to just share the outreach and engagement strategy that we've developed for the sustainability plan. So we are early in the process. Again, our inventory report was released in January. And with that, we've got now a number of key tasks to continue to work through in order to complete our efforts. In January, with completion of that greenhouse gas emission inventory, we did begin reaching out to all of our municipal advisory committees. We also have presentations that we are also hosting. We've got workshops that have been scheduled. In fact, we have one here in Auburn later this evening, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And the purpose of the workshop is to share the results of the inventory, to begin discussions on our vulnerability assessment, and also to start engagement with discussions on reduction strategies. So we also have additional MAC meetings and workshops that will be scheduled at a later date. So we're anticipating in about autumn timeframe, we'll be able to go back to our municipal advisory committees to allow them to weigh in on additional reduction strategies and any of the vulnerability strategies that we've been able to draft together. We'll also have additional workshops to allow the public also that opportunity to weigh in on our reduction strategies. So the, we also have an online engagement component where we have created a dedicated webpage and email address just for this project. Folks can stay up to date on our efforts, be able to access relevant documents. We've got some other online engagement activities as part of that effort. We have a technical advisory committee that's been formed, and this consists of our expert staff within the county departments, but also we've got staff that are coming from utility and special districts and other agencies, who all have a stake in the sustainability plan. And they're able to provide their expertise in reviewing the greenhouse gas emission inventory reports to work with our team as we develop the vulnerability assessment, identifying adaptation strategies, and then also looking at potential emission reduction programs, both community-wide, and also to assist with the county's operations. And last, we have our meetings with our key stakeholders. So we actually did begin this process a few months ago, but here in April, we really do plan to kick up our efforts to meet with various stakeholders, to keep them engaged in the process, and to continue our discussions until we complete this effort. Here we have just a list of the meetings. So today, we're providing our first informational update to your commission. We did have this same meeting with our Board of Supervisors on Tuesday. We have our technical advisory committee meeting. That next one is also today to go over the results of our inventory and begin discussion on our vulnerability assessment. We do have two public workshops. The one that originally scheduled in Tahoe was for March 7th. We actually moved this date to April. We have our meeting here tonight to reach our Auburn folks. And we are having some discussions of additional workshops that we may need to schedule here in the near future. So as Lauren mentioned, just a few of the upcoming tasks that we have, first is the forecasting of the future GHG emissions, and then also identifying an emission reduction target. So staff will present this information to the Board of Supervisors. We're also able, available to present that information to the commission, where we will be seeking consideration, comment, and direction. And we anticipate being able to do that by, as soon as summer. Completion of the sustainability plan, we're anticipating that for early of 2019. So that concludes my presentation. As stated within the staff report, there's no action that's required. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And again, we do have our consulting staff, Tammy and Eli, who are available if there's any questions that are related specifically to the inventory.
Any questions?
I'd like to have a quick comment. I guess they picked the right person to do this. Your last name is Green, I noticed.
Yes. I'll also share, I did work with the Placer County Air Pollution Control District for a number of years, and-
You do have a question. After this report is finalized, is this going to result in a bunch of new laws and rules from the Board of Supervisors to control what we do in our private lives, like AB 32?
Well, if we're, I should probably maybe frame it up in two ways. So our goal is to prepare a qualified greenhouse gas reduction strategy, which would allow us to identify mitigation and requirements early in the process for new development projects, rather than waiting to analyze those projects at a project level, where maybe perhaps mitigation is not feasible, or we don't have consistency between the way that we're conditioning our projects. And so if we're successful at being able to create a qualified plan, there would be some requirements that would come from that. Now, I think that the second part, to be able to answer your question in looking at additional requirements, when we establish and we identify a target that's necessary to meet, we'll go through our analysis when we do our forecast to look first at where we believe the county's emissions will be for those years that were mentioned. We look at what the state's doing, because we want to be able to claim reductions from a number of state actions that we have in place. And then the question is left, well, what's remaining for the county to do? So it's not certain that the level of reductions at this point, that's the next step in our process. We'll need to look very closely at the emission reductions that we can get from mitigation requirements, first starting with new development. And then we look at, do we have any potential maybe for existing residential units? And whether or not they would be required, or if we could have some assumptions where maybe we would assume a small portion of the residents within Placer County might, you know, come in at some point and upgrade and retrofit some of their AC units, or maybe install solar panels. There could be some opportunity there. But the actual level of commitment and requirement, we'll need to address that once we've identified our target and we've gone through the analysis to calculate the benefits from the reduction measures.
Okay, thank you.
How are you doing? It's a pretty complex set of numbers here. At any rate, about a third of the county is public land, and it's under the jurisdiction of the federal government. How would, I guess, how's this plan going to deal with emissions from those areas?
We will only be able to identify mitigation strategies where the county has jurisdiction. So on federal lands, airports, and highway emissions, we certainly can't come up with strategies if the county doesn't have the ability to implement strategies to help reduce those.
Does or won't?
Will not.
Will not, okay.
We're only looking at areas where the county has jurisdiction.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Oh, well, I guess, I was also thinking, you know, how does the solid waste become a problem? As I think they capture most of the methane that's coming off of that right now, right? So-
They do, and there's a number of programs that the county has put in place, also addressing some of the new regulatory requirements that have come down from the state. And so the landfill is doing a wonderful job at being able to use new methodology and strategies to be able to reduce the methane. One thing that's a little confusing when folks are looking through the inventory, and as I stated, there was a slight increase in the emissions compared to the baseline. We actually are seeing a reduction even just the waste, and our inventory shows that. But there, when we calculate the emissions of methane that are occurring, it's not just for a given year. There's actually a continued, sort of like a cumulative addition of emissions that are resulting from the previous years of waste that has been received. But certainly, reducing waste, looking at composting, there's a number of strategies that the county does have in place, but we'll be looking at other areas that we might be able to further those efforts.
Okay. And then, when you're looking at agriculture, like rice production, you know, that's, they're flooded fields, but I think you're probably thinking about like the stationary pumps and tractors and that kind of stuff, in terms of what the inventory would be showing for agriculture?
Is that, I'm not able to answer that, I'm sorry. Eli, is that something you might be able to help with? Okay. May I have Eli?
I was just wondering how water would affect emissions, but maybe it's the action of farming that does, I don't know.
Thank you. I'm Eli Crispie, one of the technical consultants with Placeworks. There is a mixture of all of those different sources that you described. There is some emissions that result directly from the flooding of the fields. There is also the use of tractors and equipment, and then certain pesticides and fertilizers that are applied to the soil. Those all contribute to those agricultural emissions.
You say the flooding of the fields causes emissions?
The flooding of the fields for rice does cause emissions because of the breakdown of organic material. In the absence of oxygen, creates certain emissions.
Oh, okay. I guess, you know, I guess probably what makes me wonder a little bit is, is, you know, there's emissions that come off of, I guess, flooding the field, but, you know, creation of, I mean, breaking down vegetation or organic material, I guess, causes emissions, but in another sense, that's a good thing. So, you know, it seems like when the plan is being developed, how you balance some of those things is going to be a challenge.
Absolutely. And there are certain best practices that the UC system and others are looking at to continue to grow rice and, you know, to maintain that economic viability without, or while reducing the resulting greenhouse gas emissions. And the sustainability plan will be sort of targeting the areas where we think we can achieve those reductions without affecting the viability of those fields.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Well, it looks like you got a challenge ahead of you, at any rate, so.
The executive board, signed by Governor Schwarzenegger in 2005, and followed by an Assembly Bill 32, uses 1990 as the baseline. And my concern, unless I'm just misinterpreting this, is that the county has grown significantly since 1990. I mean, I think back to the many open fields that were still here in 1990 that now have homes and businesses and retail covering them now. These are pretty aggressive objectives by certain dates out that we have to cut back using 1990 as the baseline. Are they going to be really difficult to meet?
Well, that's a question that we'll definitely need to answer as we continue this process. The first task, or the next task now after completing the inventory, is to identify a target that would be achievable for the county. We are using the baseline year of 2015, and we will be able to take into account the state's various regulations that they do have in place, and some would feel that they are quite aggressive. We do have also, as part of the first executive order in AB 32, staff at the Air Resources Board was directed to prepare a scoping plan, which outlines the various programs and strategies, and it speaks to some of these regulatory requirements as to how the state's going to achieve those reductions. And so we're able to actually use that report. We're able to use the methodologies and the forecasting of emissions within our own work to identify what would be appropriate for the county in order to align with those efforts.
So you're saying we can get around the 1990 baseline?
Well, we can't get around the 1990 baseline. The emission reduction targets that need to be achieved by 2020, 2030, and 2050, those are regulatory requirements that the state must abide by. Now, there, within their inventory, they do estimate population growth. So the demographics that they use for population does assume that jurisdictions will continue to grow. And so the reduction strategies that they have in place, again, within the sustainability plan, we're able to use those same emission reductions. Now, when we look at our baseline inventory for 2015, and we project out into 2020, 2030, and 2050, essentially, we will be doing our best to align with the state's efforts to be able to demonstrate that we can achieve those same targets. Now, the emission reduction requirements that will be left for the county to figure out how we're going to reduce, that's really a big question. And once we've got that identified, we'll then, you know, look at our reduction strategies that are necessary to achieve that. But, you know, as I shared earlier, when we look at this emission reduction target that we're setting for the county, and when we're looking at emission reduction strategies, those are things that we are bringing back, both to the commission and to the board, to weigh in on. So we do plan to bring additional information at that time, where we can have these discussions as to what are the regulatory requirements for the county? And are we able, do we think that we're able to meet these emission reduction targets that have been identified by the state?
Yeah, because, again, my question, and maybe you want to answer this at a later date, is that if they're going to try to push down those statewide requirements on local municipalities or local counties to have to meet those kind of standards on their own, on the 1990 baseline, I just see it as there's going to have to be almost draconian types efforts put in place here in our county to try to comply with those pretty aggressive requirements that are out there. So it'll be interesting to see where this goes.
And if I could just clarify, currently, right now, the regulatory requirements that we have for the emission reductions, those are targeted to state agencies. And so at this time, we do not have any regulatory requirements that state the level of emissions that jurisdictions or municipalities must meet. We do have some other requirements in place that do require the analysis of emissions. And the state has acknowledged within the scoping plan that jurisdictions, given that they have local control over the transportation and energy use in those types of sectors, that it's appropriate for a jurisdiction to come up with its own thresholds to use. So, but I think that the bigger question that we'll need to, you know, address is whether or not we can align with what the state's doing, and whether or not that's feasible for the county.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Angel. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Now, the public want to make any comments on this program?
Hello. My name's Jane Nagri. Since I'm the only one speaking, maybe I could have more than three minutes. My, I have two comments. First is the notification to the public. This is something that is life-changing for all of us. And I think it was last week I heard about the meeting tonight. And I know my neighbors don't know about the meeting, so what I'm thinking, Placer County needs to send out a general written notice well in advance for these meetings, because otherwise, the public is not going to be involved. And include the website, because I just discovered the website today in the paperwork, and, you know, there's like six or seven people from the community. And so I think communication is very important. My other comment is, as far as when we looked at that chart, car emissions, they were number one. And I think what needs to be considered in this for Placer County is Placer County's respect for the community plans. Every time we bring a community plan, it, the density is increased sometimes twice, sometimes threefold. That's more people, more pavement. And you saw today, you added 97 car trips to that little section of Eureka Road. So I think we need to go back to basics and respect our Placer County roots. I mean, we were required by the county to write those community plans, and there was a reason. It was to keep our communities rural, and it was to develop land sensibly, and admissions, we were supposed to be controlling those. So I would like that to be a big part of the discussion. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I guess we'll close this item out. It's not an action item, just an informational item, and we'll look forward to further information on that in the future. Okay, I'm guessing we don't need another break before our last item? Okay, I think everybody's good. All right. Thank you, Angel. Okay, we will again move to our last item.
All right. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
My name's Ryan Zander. I'm the supervising code enforcement officer for Placer County. This action requested today is to conduct a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. 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 My fault. I was supposed to ask, county council was supposed to-
Sorry, I jumped the gun.
-give us some guidelines on this. Okay, Jason, Jason needs eternity on.
Let's see. There we go.
Let's see, there we go. Thank you, Ternator. Just briefly, the item before the Commission today is a hearing of an appeal on administrative fines imposed by a hearing officer pursuant to County Code Section 8.10.120 for violation of County Code Section 8.10.040A2. The hearing before the Commission is pursuant to County Code Section 8.10.12H, and these sections outline fine amounts and the appeal process relating to the county's cannabis regulations. So, today, the Commission's tasked with determining whether to affirm, affirm in part, reverse or reverse in part the hearing officer's decision imposing administrative penalties in the amount of $32,200 on appellant Christopher Lowell for the outdoor cultivation of 322 non-medical cannabis plants in violation of County Code Section 8.10.040. Pursuant to County Code Section 8.10.120 and 8.1, H1, and H7, the scope of the appeal and the hearing today is limited to the amount of administrative penalties imposed by the hearing officer and the specific grounds for appeal. The decision of the Commission is to be based on findings of fact about the particular case which identify the reasons for action. A decision by the Planning Commission shall be final and is not appealable to the Board of Supervisors or any other county board or commission. The procedure for the hearing today will be as follows. Code enforcement staff will present a brief introduction on the appeal before the Commission, then the Chair will open the public hearing, the appellant will then present his appeal to the Commission, code enforcement will then present to the Commission, the Chair will then open the hearing to members of the public for public comment, and then the appellant will have an ability for rebuttal, however, that rebuttal will be limited only to the appellant and to the matters presented at the hearing. At that time, the Chair will close the public hearing, and the Commission will deliberate and decide on what action, if any, to take on the appeal. For the record, County Code Enforcement is represented by separate counsel in this matter, and my legal representation is limited solely to the Commission.
Thank you. Sorry for that.
All right.
Thank you.
... confusion there at the very beginning, so I guess taking action on opening up a public hearing on this item. So, Ryan, sorry for that delay.
No, that's okay. Okay, so I might reiterate some of the things she said, but the action is requested today is a public hearing for Christopher Lowell, owner of the property at 10-8-9-0 Ofer Road in Auburn. This is regarding the amount of administrative penalties imposed by the hearing officer for the violations of the county's cannabis ordinance. Since it's the first time of having an appeal of this nature, I just wanted to kind of go over the cannabis ordinance a little bit and then speak briefly to the case.
That'd be helpful.
The Placer County Cannabis Ordinance was adopted by the Board of Supervisors on December 6, 2016. About 30 days later, that went into effect. The ordinance states a maximum of six plants on no more than 50 square feet in total is allowed for outdoor cultivation of non-medical cannabis per parcel with a private residence. The ordinance also specifies an administrative penalty of $1,000 per non-medical cannabis plant in excess of six plants. The ordinance also establishes a nuisance abatement hearing process where a hearing officer decides whether to abate cannabis violations or whether to impose administrative penalties. On appeal, the Planning Commission is limited to considering the amount of administrative penalties imposed, the specific grounds of appeal raised by the appellate. So, here's just an overview. We've got Auburn to the east, we've Newcastle here to the west, Interstate 80 south, and then the property in question lies in between Ofer Road and Interstate 80. This imagery dates August 2017, just prior, a couple months prior to our investigation, and just shows, there's the residents, here's Ofer Road, or I'm sorry, Ofer Road's out of the picture, and then these hoop houses are, where the cannabis plants were located. In this case, code enforcement officers observed 328 cannabis plants on the property. 322 of those plants were beyond the six-plant allowance. An administrative hearing was subsequently held by our hearing officer, and the hearing officer imposed a fine of $32,200 at a penalty of $100 per plant, or per violation, rather. Mr. Lowell will be given the opportunity to present his case, and then we will have our recommendations to present to you guys after that, so I'm done.
At what point is, what point is it appropriate to ask questions?
The Commission has the ability to ask questions throughout the public hearing, and then the Commission also has the ability to come back and ask questions after the public hearing is closed, once you enter into deliberations, if you choose to do so.
Do we have any questions now? I do have, I guess, one question.
Yes, sir.
When you were, obviously, wrote the citation at that time, you gave them seven days, right, to abate the issue? Is that, that's correct, right? Seven days?
I'm sorry, at what point? Prior to the citation?
Well, yes, I'm sorry, prior to this, to it, you gave them seven days after observing-
I don't know, I'd have to look into the staff report and the specifics and the dates of the timeline. We did an initial contact at the property, a 72-hour notice to abate, and then the timeline is well over seven days between when we verified the violations, and then a citation was issued, or was essentially written and mailed to the appellant the same day the violations were being verified.
Did you go into the actual, those, it looks like greenhouses?
Yes.
Because you did, because you had to count them, obviously.
Yes, we systematically counted every plant in those hoop houses.
How large were the plants? I mean, were they-
I don't want to speculate on the size. We did measure the canopy bases, I have, we could get you that information if you need.
I was just, were they harvestable, I guess, is what I'm asking? Were they big enough to be harvestable? I'm just trying to get the size of what these things, were they this high, or?
Ternator, may I interrupt briefly? I'm sorry. I would suggest that specific questions as to the facts may be held during the time, during the public hearing after the appellant has presented, and then code enforcement staff will also present, because at this time, this is supposed to be a brief introduction, and then we'll open the public hearing, so apologies if I gave you the green light earlier-
I'll ask you to-
... and rang you back.
-to come in anytime you think.
Sorry for the interruption, thank you.
Wrong direction.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Ryan.
Good afternoon, Commission. This is a review of a fine, not whether or not there was an actual violation. The way the legislation is written in Placer County limits this review to a review of the fine.
Could you give us your name?
Chris Lowell.
Thank you.
The fine itself is actually defined, the fine limits are defined in state law, in state legislation. Government Code 53-069.4 and 25-132 define and limit the authority of the county to impose sanctions upon anybody that violates a code or an ordinance, and that limitation is $100. That's the maximum penalty. Placer County, in their infinite wisdom, has decided to enact some arbitrary ordinance that allows them to impose a progressive fine per plant, as though a plant violates an ordinance. A violation of an ordinance is a violation of the ordinance, where you violate it just a little bit or just a lot is still a violation, and it's still susceptible to only a $100 penalty. That is defined in state law. Placer County has decided that their, their ordinance is, has more authority and effect than the state laws, but in their same ordinance, they also recognize that their authority is granted from the state statutes, and that authority is limited to, like I said, $100 maximum. They have also given a staff report, and in their staff report, they rebut that with, that they, they rebut it with the fact that they imposed this as a misdemeanor, but they don't, they don't give any evidence at all, or even infer that this was a legal proceeding, or that there was even a, even a charge of a criminal liability. There's no misdemeanor that's been charged, there's no infraction that's been charged. This is clearly an administrative remedy that was given by this ordinance, and that administrative remedy is only a $100 fine, like I said, as defined by state statute. If this was, in fact, a criminal allegation, then this, this criminal allegation should have been processed in a judicial proceeding in front of a Superior Court, and that would have initiated due process inside of those courts with those proceedings, but that didn't take place here. This was strictly administrative. There was no formal complaint. There was no jury trial. If this was, in fact, a misdemeanor, then there should have been a right to a jury trial. This was clearly administrative, and when they're called on it, they use their rebuttal in their staff reports to say that this was, in fact, a misdemeanor, but this is the first time I've even heard of this. And this is a new avenue for the county. This is something totally new to them that they've never done before, and that's why there's so much discrepancy, that's why they're now represented by attorneys, this has gone up to federal court, this is in, also going to get reviewed by judicially in Roseville in Superior Court. They've created a gigantic malaise of legislation and fines, and they're trying to do this just so that they can limit cannabis activity, as though they also say in their staff report. They say the cannabis fine structure is necessary to deter unlawful cannabis activity. The problem is, is state law limits their authority to what they can do, and state law defines what criminal sanctions are and what administrative sanctions are. Administrative sanctions are $100. Criminal sanctions can be up to $1,000 in a misdemeanor application, but it has to be done in a legal proceeding in front of a judicial court. Can't be done in front of an administrative court like it was done here. And it's only per violation, it's not per plant. So, the way that Placer County enacted this ordinance as per plant, they've effectively made this a progressive fine that preempts all state legislation for imposition of fines. This same theory would hold true if you were speeding and going 66 miles an hour, that's a violation of the speeding laws. Or if you're going 70 or 80, it's still the same violation, it doesn't go up. Now, they have other rules and regulations for speeding. If you get to, if you pass 100 miles an hour, you violated another law, and then that law has another fine structure. But that's all defined by state legislators, and those are fine amounts that can be imposed in larger amounts because it's defined in state legislation. The county doesn't have that option. They can only charge $100 for any violation maximum if they're imposing this administratively, which, in fact, is supposed to be remedial and not punitive. They've elected to not go to a legal proceeding to not, not venture out and try to say that this is a criminal element, because, in fact, then that would initiate due process for myself. Instead, they attempted to impose $322,000 fine, and when this was brought before the Commissioner that heard this administratively, he lowered the fine down to $32,000, and he referenced the fact that the law does say $100, not $1,000, as the county says. But the error that he made was imposing it per plant. You can't impose it per plant. That's the same as imposing a fine per mile an hour over 65 miles an hour. Violation's a violation. And if the county wants to have a higher fine structure or a progressive fine structure, then their remedy for that, to increase these fines or offer a progressive fine, is to propose new state legislation that gives punitive sanction amounts a larger bite for people that are violating these laws, but unfortunately, it just doesn't exist. The state legislator has limited counties and jurisdictions to the fine structure, and that's what the county is now limited to. And unless they get some new legislation passed, other than their ordinance that is the enabling statute, their ordinance can't, can't preempt state law or exceed state law. And in fact, if this was challenged under the Eighth Amendment in federal court, this is an excessive fine that is clearly defined by just looking at the statute and the limits of the statute. And Placer County just can't write some ordinance and get it passed within five days with no notice, no comment, no nothing, and then just say, well, we can charge you $322,000 because we say so. Just doesn't happen. This is also limited by Prop 218, as this is an illegal tax because it's not a requested service. This is a punitive sanction, and a punitive sanction must be imposed through state enabling statutes. And these fines are also supposed to go to the state. That's why these proceedings are supposed to be brought in the name of the state. And if you reference back to the enabling statutes, which are Government Code 53-069.4 and 25-132, it specifically says, "An action brought in the name of the state." And the reason for that is the sanctioning money for any fines related to an ordinance violation or a law violation must be given to the state because the county does not have the authority to collect any sort of money outside of a permitting fee or outside of a related cost. And this is covered by Prop 218 also. So, in fact, what they're doing is trying to impose an unlawful tax in the name of the county and collect that money. And that's, that's what I'm here today to try to stop. I don't know how much of this is really getting through, but this will be challenged no matter what, all the way up to federal court and reviewed again. If there is, in fact, a fine here today, then it will be reviewed again in Superior Court in Roseville in a de novo hearing. Thank you.
All right. County Council, what's the next step? Public comment?
The Commission may ask the appellant any questions they may have at this time, or the Commission may choose to continue the public hearing and allow the code enforcement representatives to present the Commission with their presentation.
Any questions?
Let me see, what I hear being asserted is that there's only one violation, but the state law, at least as I understand it, and, you know, I mean, I'm just a novice here too, you understand, but state law really gives you a square footage in six plants. And so, then if you have seven plants, then that's a violation. If you have 300 plants, then what I hear the county saying is that's 300 violations. But I guess where I'm challenged here is you're calling it one violation, and the county's calling it 322 violations.
Yeah.
So, at any rate, that, I think, is something maybe we'll hear more on, but, you know, I'm not clear on your position here yet.
Well, let me reiterate, people violate laws, not plants. So, if a person cultivates more than six plants, then he's in violation of law. If he cultivates 10 plants, he's in the same violation of the law. It doesn't get any more excessive. If the county wanted to regulate like that, they would have to write a new legislation that would say if you're in excess of 10 plants, or if you're in excess of 20 plants, or you're in excess of 100 plants, and they could have multiple different violations up until you get to a new plant number, a new plant count. The reason they don't do that is because the state enabling statutes for the fine structures still give them a limitation of $100 per violation. So, if, in fact, they say, well, you violated, you violated the in excess of 20 plants, they couldn't come back and say, you violated in excess of 10 plants also. You can only violate the law one time for one act, and one act isn't, you know, 10 or 20 or 322 violations. And that's why they have refused to acknowledge the fact that they're limited to the $100 per violation and just wrote it to say, the plants violate the ordinance, which is just a complete ridiculous notion of any law principle known to man.
Okay, well, I hear your position, and I guess we'll be discussing it here shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Lowell? Okay. And I guess we'll hear from the code enforcement. Oh, is it public first and then code enforcement?
Code enforcement and then allowed for public comment.
All right.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Profant, Deputy County Counsel for Code Enforcement. So I did want to respond to the appellant's legal arguments briefly. State law essentially allows local agencies to pursue code violations through either a criminal process or a administrative process. That doesn't change how the violation is classified. So even under the materials that the appellant has provided, the default assumption is that a violation of a county ordinance is a misdemeanor. And so that comes from state law. That's the default assumption, it's a misdemeanor. The fact that it's a misdemeanor does not mean that we have to file charges, you know, through the district attorney's office and prosecute the violation criminally. Even though it's a misdemeanor, we can still bring it through an administrative hearing process and pursue it that way. And that's the way the county has chosen to pursue this violation. So in other words, the classification as an infraction or misdemeanor does not change the fact that we can either pursue it through court or through an administrative process. You know, in our position in this case is that the violation is a misdemeanor. As the appellant has stated, the only limitation in state law is that an infraction is subject to a $100 fine for a first offense. There's nothing in state law that explicitly limits what a misdemeanor is subject to for a first offense in the context of an administrative hearing process. And I believe in the penal code, I could be incorrect, but I believe that there, it in fact specifies that a misdemeanor is subject to a $1,000 fine. It's just we're not pursuing this criminally. We're pursuing it through this hearing body. Regarding the issue of the, you know, looking at each plant beyond the six as a separate violation, that's correct. That is in fact, the way that this ordinance looks at the plants. And you know, it's true that some ordinances do not sort of have a progressive fine structure. You know, if you're over the limit, then it doesn't matter how much you're over the limit by, it's a single fine. But I mean, there are other laws that do look at how much you are over a limit and change the amount of the fine on that basis, or look at it as being potentially another separate violation. There is no case law with any precedential value that has struck down this approach, to my knowledge. So I know that this is an approach that other local agencies have taken, where they've decided to look at each plant as being a separate violation of their law and that has not been struck down by any court of appeal, to my knowledge. And therefore, that's the approach that the Board of Supervisors of this county decided to pursue with regard to this issue and our position is that that should be respected. And you know, in this case, and we'll get to this later, the hearing officer did only impose the $100 penalty instead of 1,000 per plant, which is what the ordinance calls for. You know, we disagree with that decision, but we're not asking you to change it. You know, we're just asking for you to affirm the hearing officer's decision. We'll get to the specifics of that later, but you know, we did want to make that clear. You know, that's an issue that we'll address more directly with the hearing officer next time, as to why, you know, we're not limited by the $100 per violation.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Let me see, I'm still a little unclear on the distinction between misdemeanor and infraction.
Well, essentially, I mean, there are different, there would be different criminal consequences for both. They're subject to different criminal penalties, both in terms of jail time and the amount of fine that can be imposed. And when you bring them into an administrative hearing process like this, essentially, the jail time is a non-issue because we're not choosing to prosecute the appellant criminally. So the only thing that becomes relevant there is the amount of the fine that we can, you know, impose for the violation. And so when it's a misdemeanor and not an infraction, we are allowed to impose more than $100 per violation.
Well, just for clarification though, you know, like, this is my naive understanding is if I get a traffic ticket, that's an infraction.
Often it is. Yes, that's right. If it's not something serious, yeah.
Yeah. And so maybe there's not a solid line between an infraction and a misdemeanor, but I guess that's what has been determined, but was there basis for the misdemeanor in this case?
Well, I mean, again, it's just, it's the default assumption in state law that a violation of a county code is a misdemeanor and not an infraction. And the board has the authority to make it an infraction or to make it a misdemeanor, to change the way it's classified, you know, and essentially, you know, in this instance, the board did not choose to call it an infraction.
So this has been a board supervisor's decision that you're talking about?
By virtue of the fact that they didn't call it an infraction, the de facto result is that it's a misdemeanor.
Okay.
Because it's a violation of a county code.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for council? I guess, let's see, I have one question, this is a little off of what you've been talking, but maybe you can address it. Does the ordinance or the state law allow when there's a violation found to confiscate the, whatever is considered in violation? Can it be confiscated?
Yes. In addition to the hearing officer's decision on the penalties, there was also an order to abate the violation and that was, I believe, five days from the order.
But could the county come in and confiscate the, was what I'm saying, could they come in and do the abatement?
Yes, there was an order for abatement in this case and that was the, we did a, an inspection after the hearing, after the decision and with an order to abate. At that inspection, had there been violations existing, we had an order to have the sheriff's office actually remove the plants physically to bring that, basically force that property into compliance.
So you gave them amount of time to do it themselves?
Yes, more than the five days elapsed prior to us confirming that the violation was no longer there.
But you found a violation initially and I'm just saying, I guess I can't understand why there was given the opportunity for them to basically harvest the crop themselves.
In this case, we had to obtain an inspection warrant prior to even verifying the extent of the violations. That, at that point, after the hearing officer's decision, he gave them, the property owner, five days to abate the problem on his own. After that five day expired, we attempted to get compliance to go onto the property to verify.
Try to get consent.
Consent. We tried to get consent to the property. We asked him if we can go out to the property and that was declined, which, you know, the next step for us to legally go out there would be to get an inspection warrant, which we did. And at the time of that inspection warrant, in January 31st of 2018, I was the one to go out there and verify there was no longer any violations.
At that point, you could have confiscated whatever was left.
Yes, sir. If there was seven plants, we would have been confiscating one plant.
Yeah, okay. Maybe one more question, and this is a little bit different, but let me see, we're hearing today on the, our hearing today is basically on the violation of the plants. But this doesn't include, or does it include, the, there's some administrative costs that the county's gone to? And so I guess I'm assuming, but maybe you could clarify, that's a separate, that's a separate collection that you'll be facing?
Yes, there's cost recovery on the administrative time and efforts that we've put into this. We're speaking to the actual fine imposed by the hearing officer for the violations.
Okay. And that's really not on our agenda today, so that would proceed whether or not, whatever we decide, right?
Yes, that's not, we're not discussing our time and what, that cost recovery is. We're not discussing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before we open it to the public? Is there anybody from the public who would like to make a comment on this situation? Okay, council, what's the next step here?
Is that the extent of code enforcement's presentation at this time?
Just the recommendations we present.
Right. So can you speak to the commission, please? Sorry.
Before I conclude, I just have one slide to slip over to and then to show the recommendations.
All right.
Which I'll have to go over here to the podium.
Once they're concluded, then I would open for comments from the public. And after that, we will allow, or the commission will allow, the appellant to come up for rebuttal.
I thought I already gave the public a comment time, but...
Okay, so at this point, we have our recommendations. County fines the appeal category exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And then also, our recommendation is deny Mr. Lowell's appeal in its entirety based on the following finding. All grounds of appeal lack merit for the reasons set forth in the staff report. We recommend to affirm the hearing officer's decision, imposing the administrative penalties in the amount of $32,200 on Mr. Lowell for the outdoor cultivation of 322 non-medical cannabis plants in violation of the county code. And it's based on the following. Hearing officer's decisions, or I'm sorry, the hearing officer's findings of fact as to the fines are supported by substantial evidence in the administrative record. Also, each cannabis plant exceeding the limits set forth in the Placer County Code constitutes a distinct and separate violation of that section and is subject to a separate fine. The county appropriately fined appellant, Mr. Lowell, for 322 violations that was observed on the property during our inspections on October 27th, 2017. Our reinspection on January 31st revealed there are no longer any violations on the property. That is it.
Do you have a question for Ryan?
Ryan, I'm just going to ask you now, there's no violation. What happened that was violation? You had just confiscated the plants there in January?
Yes, at the time, on January, the final inspection, if there was any violations, we would have just removed the plants to bring the property into compliance.
The plants would have been gone either by the owners receiving, removing them, or you guys removing, the county removing them.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Those plants would have been removed as they were by the owner or they would have been removed by the county staff on that date.
Yes, in an ideal situation, the property owner would have just gotten into compliance by removing the plants in excess or out of compliance of the county code well before this. And at the hearing, the officer, the hearing officer gave him five days to abate the problem on his own. When that happened, I don't know, but when we had to obtain an inspection warrant just to get back on the property, just to verify that the order was complied with, everything was gone at that point. And we, you know, we were satisfied that that occurred then.
Okay, thank you. Let me see, a process question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I don't want you to cringe up here, this is just process. So in terms of, this is a recommendation here for... So let me see, you're asking for $32,200 or $3,000?
Thirty-two thousand.
I mean...
So the hearing officer's decision for the fines imposed on Mr. Lowell was $32,200?
Let me do the process, I don't want to get you too much. The process is, as far as a decision that, you know, we're charged with making, so it could be as low as $100 or it could be as high as $33,000? Is that correct?
Your board has the discretion to either affirm, affirm in part, or deny or modify the amount of fines imposed, as long as the board can articulate the findings for that determination on the record. And so you are not limited on the amount that the commission can decide to impose the fine for if the commission were to decide to do so.
So you're saying that we could reimpose the initial fine if we wanted to?
If the commission were to articulate findings and justifications as to that determination or decision.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ryan. Now, public counsel, am I supposed to open it for public comment? And then if there is some, then he gets an opportunity to respond to that, is that correct?
I would suggest that you open for public comment and whether or not there is public comment, then the appellant will have an opportunity to provide a rebuttal.
Right. And then at that point, then it turns back to us for discussion and decision.
Then I would suggest closing the public comment and then coming back to the commission for your own discussions and deliberations.
Okay, great. All right, any public comment? Didn't see one earlier, so I'm guessing we still don't have that. Mr. Lowell, do you want to come up and make any more comments?
Yes, sir. I'd also like to request, I sent over copies of state law to get included in this agenda. I sent it over through email, which is what I was instructed to do, but it hasn't been attached.
We have.
You guys have it? I'm requesting that this be attached to the actual agenda so the public can see it too. Is that possible? Because the only staff reports are there, none of my evidence, which I'm referencing as the state law, which for this should have been included, I believe.
The publishing of the agenda is subject to the requirements of the Brown Act and so if this was received after the publishing date requirements, it would not have made it into the published agenda, but I do know it was made available this morning.
So this is in the agenda now?
No.
This was submitted and is part of the record, as long as the clerk has received it as of when it was received.
Okay. From what I was told, it had to be delivered 24 hours before to be included in the agenda and this was included about 48 hours before. That's why I'm requesting this be included in the agenda because I think it was timely.
As far as I know, I had this one mailed to me.
I think we just got it this morning.
Did we just?
Yeah, we just got this this morning.
Apologize.
Because you can see it was printed on the sticks.
No. I'm looking for this to be available to the public. But it's not on the website.
No.
Okay. That's kind of what I was asking to have done. And if not, if it's not going to be posted to the website, I'd like to know why. Why do all of the staff reports and the county's reports that gives their opinion on how things work get included for public review, but then my rebuttal just don't?
I would ask that Mr. Lowell address you.
Yes.
And then you can address the clerk.
You address me and then I'm going to respond to that.
So...
Are you done asking your question?
It was a request to get this included into the agenda.
Counsel, would you respond to that?
As stated earlier, the planning commission is subject to notice and publishing requirements of the Brown Act and that the agenda has to be posted and published within a certain timeframe leading up to this meeting. If items weren't received prior to that timeframe, then they would not be able to be included in the agenda and including them in the agenda at that time would place the commission in potential violation of the Brown Act. And so I understand that this document has been received by the clerk and the commission at this time and has been made a part of the public record of this meeting.
It's pretty nondescript. Like I said, it was included prior to the timeframe and she's not giving a timeframe. The reason she's not giving a timeframe is because it was timely. That's why I'm asking that this get included into the agenda. And if it can't be included in the agenda, then I would like to know the timeframe as to when it was supposed to be included to get included in the agenda.
May I ask the clerk if we have a timestamp of when this agenda was posted?
The agenda is posted by Friday, Thursday, Friday.
Okay. Again, I think this comes back to like some circular logic or something. When they posted, the agenda has no bearing as to when I submitted this to get included into the agenda. So if there's a cutoff of when I have to include something, then I think that that should be, that should become predominant here. should be, that should become predominant here, and not when the county submitted something, or when, when this was first given to the public. I should have a specific date as to when this should be included, because I believe it's 24 hours before the agenda.
It's not, but, go ahead.
Okay, I guess, guess what I'm puzzling over this discussion that we're having right now? And the reason is, when I heard counsel say, is that we did, I mean, we have a copy of that sitting at the table here.
Yes.
And it was available for us this morning. And at least what the county is saying is that when it was submitted, it was outside the timeframe that the agenda became available to the public. But I guess where I'm puzzling is, I also heard counsel say that it will become part of the record. And so significance of this being included in the agenda to the public, you know, I'm not really seeing that. Sorry about that, but...
The, the significance is, is a full disclosure of everything that is prevalent for this, this hearing or this review. If, if the public wants to look at something, they, they should be entitled to all documents from the proceeding, not just the ones that the county wants to put on the agenda.
It is, it is, we're accepting it into record today, because that's when we received it. But anything that's given out to the public prior for our meetings has to be a week ahead of time. And so it's, it's in the record, I, I think we're getting in a circle here, and we're going nowhere, so I think it's time to kinda end this. You know, it's in public record, anybody who wants to review it can certainly review that. And that you did not meet the timelines of presenting it to us, so that we could have it in the initial package. But the, but the commission has had the opportunity, we got it this morning, had a chance to review that, so...
Okay.
We're, we're the decision makers here, and this is, I think you must be, should be most important to you, that we have had the opportunity to review it, not the public at this point.
Okay, I'll move on. Mr. Prefont spoke earlier about a distinction between misdemeanor and infraction, and the one thing that he left out was administrative remedy that is not a misdemeanor or an infraction. If this was a misdemeanor or infraction, then this would be guided by the penal code, and the penal code specifically says that there must be an indictment, information, or complaint. And the only alternative to that is an approved form by the California Judicial Council, and those are the forms that a police officer would write as a citation, in, for a speeding ticket, or, or something similar to that effect. The county's forms are not approved in any way, and what the county is really doing is an administrative action. This is not a misdemeanor, this is not an infraction. As he has said, that by default, it is a misdemeanor, and he is correct, but the problem is, they never charged me with a misdemeanor, they never charged me with an infraction. And what they did is they brought an administrative action as though this was a nuisance case. And this, this would be appropriate in an equitable remedy for a nuisance abatement, not for imposition of a penalty. So the imposition of a penalty is an administrative remedy, but it must be procured through a judicial setting. If it is charged in it as, as a misdemeanor, it must go to Superior Court. If it's an infraction, then I agree that the case law is, is not really there. Maybe the county can hear it if it's an infraction, maybe they can't, but they still have to follow all penal code statutes, they still have to give you due process, and none of that occurred here. The other thing that Mr. Prefont is missing is the fact that if this is in fact a misdemeanor, or if it is an infraction, then there's culpability issues. The, the county has admitted that I was not the one that cultivated marijuana in any way. The county merely claims that I was the property owner, and that me as the property owner are liable for whatever my tenants do. This, this thought process is only accurate for equitable proceedings, as though as if there is a, a nuisance occurring on the property, and they want the nuisance corrected. And those proceedings are prevalent all through administrative processes, which is what they tried to bring, and they did bring for the nuisance abatement, but they collectively tried to combine the imposition of a punitive sanction, which would be through a misdemeanor and infraction, together, and then say that these are one in fact the same, which is what they're not. The equitable remedy, like I said, is ordering somebody to correct the violation, and there's, there's no ability to impose a fine, remedial or punitive in that context. The only way of remedial or punitive sanction can be imposed is through a legal proceeding, and this was not a legal proceeding in any way whatsoever, because no due process happened, there was no indictment, no information, no complaint in the case, and in fact, there was no culpable party. And I'm pretty sure even in the staff reports, they even addressed the fact that the county ordinance says that it is applicable to property owners, but the one part that they did not address is that the property owner being liable is only for equitable proceedings for a public nuisance, violation of a public nuisance. The imposition of a punitive sanction is a completely different aspect, a completely different code, completely different procedural process for imposing the fine. The nuisance itself, I agree, I am liable for the nuisance of whatever my, my tenants create, but I, I'm not the culpable party criminally for what happened at the property. I, I am only responsible for abating the nuisance at the property, and if I don't in fact abate the nuisance, then the county can get their, their order from the court to go in and abate the nuisance, and whatever those costs are can be imposed through me, through administrative settings, or even a, a civil setting. And those, after that, those, those fees can be imposed upon the property and, and collected through property tax impositions. The, the way that the county has tackled this has been very, very deceiving, and is going to cost them a lot of money in litigation to, to resolve. I request that this commission bring the fine down to zero, as I'm not the culpable party. And it's clear by the legislation I provided, showing that these in fact are criminal, and the admission by the county that this was a misdemeanor, and me not being the culpable party, I request that this commission bring the fine down to zero. If the commission feels that the ordinance prevails over any other state law, or case law, or any historical finding by a court that would say a non-culpable party is liable for a fine, then I request that this commission impose the sanction according with the statutes 53069.4 and 25132, which is, limits the fine to a hundred dollar penalty, and would be in line with the, the state judicial approved legislation. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna stop the hearing for about five minutes, and then we're gonna, I'm bringing it back, closing the public portion of this, and then I'm gonna bring it back for discussion by the commission. So we'll take a 12:18, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back for the discussion. Is that okay, county counsel, that I do that?
If you would like to take a break, and that, after the public hearing's been closed, then that is appropriate.
Okay, thank you, we'll be back shortly. We'll be back shortly. All right. I'm going to reopen the hearing. We passed the five minutes. So I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Okay. I just have one question that came up and maybe we didn't discuss it earlier. The appellant is indicating that it was his, somebody else on the property that was growing the plants. And that as such, just because he's a property owner, he's not, what'd you say, culpable or he's not responsible to the ordinance? And so maybe you could address that for me.
Okay.
Somebody, somebody up there. Don't mean to starve you too much.
No, that's okay. What I can say is, back on October 19th, when code enforcement officers went to the property initially to investigate the complaint, Mr. Lowell was the one that we contacted. Mr. Lowell was also the one that received or was sent the certified mail or any notifications. And from October, it's fair to say since October all the way to the conclusion to today, we've had no problems getting ahold of him via email, via phone calls. And I think that there was, you know, he knew the whole entire time what we were asking him to do. Also, in the hearing officers, or the hearing for this case, he refused to provide any evidence of tenants as far as a lease agreement or of any type. So we, you know, ultimately, the property owner is responsible. He also, in the hearing, gave, said, stated in the hearing that he gave the tenants permission to grow marijuana.
So basically, it's his property and he was responsible, is what you're saying, right? Is that correct?
I would say so.
Right.
Other questions? Brian, could you put the picture back up of the property?
Yes.
Okay, I guess what I'm struggling with here is, yeah, sorry. What I'm struggling with is I look at something like this. It doesn't look like, you know, mom and pop's backyard where they're growing, you know, 20 plants. This looks, with the greenhouses, it looks like a commercial operation. And so it seems to me that this raises it to a different level than what you might see in a typical violation. And my concern is that, you know, in Placer County, we have a lot of rural areas here and are conducive to these types of operations. And if we don't take significant actions against those, we're going to see more of them pop up if we only do $100 fine against something that's as significant as this. So, or even a $32,000 fine. Because I guess the question I asked initially is what were the size of the plants that were there? I don't think, Ryan, you were the initial officer out in October. But to me, if you gave them the opportunity to harvest the plants, there was probably a significant value in those 322 plants that were taken from the property. And whether a fine of even $32,200 is enough to discourage somebody who might be able to get plants to a marketable size and then basically, in my opinion, get a hand slap and they could still walk away financially in a much, you know, in a much enviable position, I guess. So I don't know if you can, if it's appropriate to ask you what the size of those plants were and if they were marketable at the time. Because to me, it just seems like they're, you know, he's complaining about the size of the fine, but my goodness, I still think he had the potential to financially walk away with certainly much more than the $32,200. So I think they're going to do a response of some sort.
Mr. Nader, we have photos of the actual contents of those hoop houses. If you would like, I can provide those to you before you make your decision to give you a better idea of what was in those.
I'd be interested in seeing what it looked like inside. I mean, or is something you can bring up on the screen or is it?
I don't have them right now, but within a few minutes, I can have all those photos for you to view.
Okay. Well, I can leave that to the rest of the commission. I don't want to delay the process here, but it would have been interesting to have seen what it actually looked like.
I would like to, if I could, go back to the question Mr. Johnson brought up. I manage a lot of properties. I would hate to be criminally liable for the actions of my tenants. You seem very convinced yourself when you answered the question that you feel the culpability is there. Can you expand on that a little more, how you came to the conclusion?
September 5th to October 19th, and we declined to applicant a month and a half.
So you mentioned about being held criminal or criminally liable for this?
Civilly or criminally.
Right, right. So yeah, as a property-
Financially liable.
As a property owner, as a property owner, and from our perspective, you know, if there's a violation of the property, at the end of the day, the property owner, obviously being reasonably notified and aware of the problem, at the end of the day, is responsible for fixing whatever the violation is. Just like if it was a rental house and someone, the tenant or the property owner is in dispute of what, who broke what, the property owner needs to provide that, you know, that standard of housing and then dispute the facts whether or not whoever created that violation. So I would say that there's a lot of responsibility or culpability since day one of our first ever contact onto that property, that there was knowledge by the property owner who admitted in the hearing that he'd provided permission, gave permission to the tenants of the property that they could do that. However, the ordinance specifies that a landlord is to provide a written permission slip to the tenants. We never received one of those. So that kind of, you know, puts it back on him. If we don't have a lease, we don't have a written permission slip from anybody, we don't know who's doing it. So at the end of the day, in my opinion, it's the property owner's responsibility to abate the problem. He was the one who was at the hearing for this case. He was the one who was given a five-day order to abate the problem. So ultimately, yes, I believe it's his responsibility. He's culpable.
Thank you.
Richard?
Well, I might make a comment here. I think a lot of this, first of all, I'm not going to here to debate the county ordinance. I guess the county council and the board of supervisors went through due diligence when they put that on the books. And that says $1,000 per plant. But I'm looking at the staff report here and the original complaint, the code enforcement officer got this on September 5th. And he contacted the property owner, Mr. Lowell, on October 19th so he could go on the property to inspect it. He was denied, he was denied to grant the consent to go on the property to check it out. So now, so the administrative officer came to that point where this fine is being imposed and the plant's now mysteriously been removed after this penalty of $32,200 has been imposed or charged. And I think that's proof to me that there was no effort on the property owners to comply with a violation. He hid the violation for a month and a half, plus all of a sudden, the plants are gone. So to me, I think the, I guess the timeline is what is impressing me. If it was only a week, five days, but it's been going on here for a little while. Plus, he did not allow code inspection until they got the order, basically, to go on the property. So it kept being delayed, 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 delayed. So talk about culpability, I think it's there. I want to see how you can see it any other way. That's just my opinion.
May I ask Mr. Lowell a question?
You may do so, if you would like to.
I should probably get a right to respond to some of the other stuff that is going out there to you.
Can't hear him.
Did you take any legal steps against your tenant when you got this notification?
My tenants, I have multiple tenants, they've, there's indemnification clauses that are included that my tenants signed, so.
But any, like, three-day notice to quit?
Why would I evict them? They pay their, they pay their rent and I think that they're in compliance with state law. The problem is, is they're not in compliance with Placer County's ordinance, but they're willing to pay the $100 violation.
So when you received the notice of violation, basically, you kind of said it's not me, it's them, but as a property owner, you did nothing to abate the situation or remedy the situation at all?
Correct. And the remedy for that is for the county to do an abatement process and abate it themselves. They elected to not do that and just impose the fine. And the culpability and the liability are being co-mingled here. Copability is for when somebody violates a criminal section of the law, not liable for an abatement. Now, I agree, I'm liable for an abatement or any charges that are incurred for liability of abatement, but that didn't happen. And I understand that this commission may feel that what's happening here is morally repugnant, but the laws that prosecute me are the same laws that protect me. And the law says $100 per violation for a culpable violator that violated the law, not a responsible party that is just a landlord. And the permission that the county is referencing for the cultivation of marijuana is just cultivation of marijuana in general. And it's legal. It's legal by Placer County's definition to cultivate marijuana up to six plants. My agreement with the tenant did not say, yeah, you can grow as much as you want. It just said, by Placer County's guidelines, you can cultivate marijuana. That was it. And there's been nothing to say that I allow them to cultivate however many marijuana plants they're saying. And in that aspect, nothing makes a liable property owner culpable for a law violation. Just because I knew what was going on, whether I knew before, whether I knew at the end, whether I knew after I was getting the fine, that has no prevalence here, that I knew. You might know that your neighbor violated the speeding laws, but you're not culpable. You're liable if you own the property and I'm liable for abatement and fees incurred for abatement, not for penalties, not for sanctions, not for anything that violates Prop. 218. That's clear in state law. And the definitions of culpability and liability are being extremely co-mingled. If you guys want to impose any fine that's above $100, I would really suggest that you petition your state legislators to expand that authority because right now, it doesn't exist. And it's been tried to be expanded five times. It's been vetoed by the governor five separate times. It's been up to the Ninth Circuit. It's been struck down every time. And the, there is nothing in any sort of legislation that allows the fine over $100 for the first penalty. It gets progressive, second penalty, I believe $500, maybe $1,000 on the third or whatever penalty. But the first one is $100. And the county council is correct that misdemeanors can go up to $1,000. But this was not a misdemeanor. If it was a misdemeanor, we'd be in a whole different court. We'd have criminal allegations. We'd have attorneys. We'd have jury trial. This was administrative. They can't, they can't use the cloak of a misdemeanor allegation for $1,000, but then say, well, we didn't charge him as a misdemeanor. Exactly, you didn't charge me as a misdemeanor.
Excuse me, Mr. Lowell, Commissioner. I believe that Commissioner Moss asked a specific question as part of the deliberations, but if we're going to continue to hear more from the appellant or from code enforcement, it would require reopening of the public hearing, which at this point, I would suggest would require a vote and a motion from the board.
And my question has been answered to my satisfaction. Thank you.
Okay. That's up to the commission to decide at this point.
Yeah, you know, I'm pretty close to ready to make a motion.
If you would like to entertain more questions, I would strongly recommend taking a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Right. Okay. Mr. Lowell, you've answered his question, so thank you.
Thank you.
It looks like you had those pictures delivered. Is that correct?
At this point, the public hearing and the ability to present evidence has been closed. And similar to, as I described with Mr. Lowell's comments, if the commission does choose to reopen the public hearing to accept new evidence, they would have to make a motion indicating the desire to do so.
I don't think we'll do that. As I said earlier, I, you know, if it were up to me, I would oppose the initial fine, but I'm going to-
So we're going to do a motion here? What are we going to do?
Well, the recommendation is back up. And I would ask that you, we need to move through this, right? Is that correct? There's more to this, so as we go through.
I would like to make a motion if you're ready.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go back to the first one?
Yeah, go back to the first one, Ryan.
Okay. So I'd make a motion that we find this appeal categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act under SEQA guidelines, Section 15321, enforcement actions by regulatory agencies. I guess as, do I put the staff report in that and everything, or is that enough?
That's sufficient for your SEQA finding. However, you should indicate the findings and reasons set forth in the staff report in further motions if you can, if you choose, if the commission chooses to use those recommendations.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson and a second by Commissioner Moss. If I could get a vote from Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to further make a motion that we deny Christopher M. Lowell's appeal in its entirety based on the following finding. All grounds of appeal lack merit for reasons set forth in the staff report.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
The first is from Commissioner Johnson and the second by Mr. Rokucci. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Could I get a vote? And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I further affirm the hearing officer's decision imposing administrative penalties in amount of $32,200 on appellant Christopher M. Lowell for outdoor cultivation of 322 non-medical cannabis plants on the property in violation of Placer County Code, Section 810040A2, based on the following findings. The hearing officer's findings of fact as to the fines, Attachment D, are supported by substantial evidence in the administrative record. And each cannabis plant exceeding the limits set forth in the Placer County Code, Section 810040A2, constitutes a distinct and separate violation of that section and is subject to a separate fine. The county appropriately fined appellant for 322 violations observed on the property during code enforcement's inspection on October 27, 2017. Code enforcement reinspection on January 31, 2018 revealed no violations on the property at present.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson and a second by Commissioner Rokucci. And a vote from Mr. Moss, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think this is not appealable, so.
Okay. Yeah.
You got a hammer.
All right. Thank you, everybody. See you next time. Meeting is over.